Okay.
All the meeting to order. Um. Go, go, please.
Mayor.
Here.
Here. Thank you.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Here.
This is what we is asking for.
Yeah.
Mr. Herr.
Man. Notice of this meeting was provided to burnable news and courier news file with municipal clerk who posted on this in Baltimore on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Please stand for the flag. I plan. Mayors, welcome. Welcome to the October tenth, twenty twenty, the meeting of the Burns Regard Council. This meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers in Borough Hall and is being broadcast live on YouTube and on Zoom to make it as convenient as possible for residents to attend the meeting. Members of the public who are here in person and those attending remotely on Zoom will be given the opportunity to comment at appropriate times during the meeting in accordance with the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open sessions and during formal public hearings on the agenda, including public hearings on ordinances. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which will be monitored and enforced by the Borough Clerk. Comments containing offensive, profane or indecent language or language constituted hate speech will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk and remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerks will mute remote speakers at the expiration of their three minutes of running time or if they make any inappropriate or offensive comments. All speakers, whether in person or on Zoom, shall state their name and address before making their comments. Uh, skip that part because we're not having cameras on today. Uh, failure of a governing body to provide a live forecast of this medium or technological problems encountered during the course of the meeting that affect remote viewing and participation will not invalidate this meeting or any action taken, including but not limited to the adoption of any ordinance, resolution or motion. Alrighty. Tonight, we have a presentation. Uh, we are, as you know, we're working through the stages of redevelopment for Palmer. And then this last stage that the council has responsibility for is the financial agreement. And since it's complicated and there's a lot of pieces, building parts to it, we've asked our experts to come and do a public presentation so that those of you that are watching can understand what's involved in this process. So I will turn it over. You, Matt or Dan?
Sorry, Mayor, I just have one clarification. The Zoom, people are not going to be able to participate in open sessions.
No, they can't.
They're just putting on their cameras.
Their cameras.
Ah, okay, yeah.
Yeah. See, Matt knows, knows to stay low on the act.
It's the execution, Mark. Exactly. Good evening, everyone. Matt Jessup, Matt with Scotland about your redevelopment council. Uh, Mayor, as you mentioned, the borough is in the middle of a process to consider a financial agreement. Um, this is in connection with the Palmer redevelopment project. All cost square and Morris Town Road, right, sixty-eight U residential units. The redevelopment plan and redevelopment agreement for which I've already been adopted, approved and executed as applicable by uh this governing body after respect for the plan reviewed by the planning board. Um, in that redevelopment agreement, we had a provision that permitted the redeveloper and in fact anticipated that the redeveloper would make an application to the borough pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law for a pilot, a payment in lieu of conventional taxes. And in fact, last month, the developer did submit that application to the borough. So in any circumstance where we're involved in project uh and the developer submits an application for uh for a tax exemption, there are two things that we want to walk through and ensure for the government body and equally for the public. The first is project needs a pilot in order to be constructed, right? But for the pilot, would this project be built if it were conventionally taxed? And there's a couple of things to look at there, right? First is if we conventionally tax this project, um, would the developer who's investing a significant amount of personal money, would they get the investment returns that would make it worth their while and their risk to invest those money on the basis? Equally, if not more importantly, is the satisfaction of the bank who is making a significant, more significant construction loan and who requires certain debt service coverage ratios, certain cash flows that are produced by the project to ensure that the bank gets repaid because banks generally like to lend up projects that are going to get repaid as opposed to ones that aren't. And so they have their own requirements. And if the bank won't lend, we don't have a project. So step one is, does this project need a pilot in order to be built? And if the answer is yes, we go to step two, which is what is the appropriate level of pilot? What is the appropriate level of payment to the borough in lieu of conventional taxes that will satisfy the return requirements of the developer and the construction lender, but also provide us with a fair amount of income relative to the project? A lot of this financial information is contained in the application that is submitted by the developer. But we want to have our own independent third-party financial experts, NW Financial, vet that information, right? We want them to look at the construction cost estimates and ensure that they're correct, that the operating expenses are correct, that the rental assumptions are correct. And then confirm, once we're comfortable with what it's going to cost to build an upgrade, make our own determinations about whether or not we could conventionally tax this project and if we can't, what is the appropriate level of pilot? And through a memo that you all should have dated the end of last month, NW has undertaken that analysis. And so without further ado, uh, Dan Maranello and Dan Banker are here from NW to take you through the uh financials behind that two-step process.
Good evening, Dan and Maranello. You're gonna have two Dan's, so you want to get that good stuff. I want, normally Dan will give this whole presentation, but since I wasn't here the last time, I thought I'd come and introduce myself. I've been with NW Financial Group since its inception, which was in the late nineteen ninety-six to the day ninety-seven. And since then, we have been representing government entities in all facets of government finance. And over really the last ten or fifteen years, redevelopment in New Jersey, especially North Jersey, has become a very big part of what we do and how we help and assist um communities like yours deal with developers, deal with developments. And try to balance that between developers being successful and municipalities getting their fair share of that and making sure that we're holding them to the requisite amount of pilot taxes that they pay. So one of the few things I just wanted to touch on were pilots are a tool that we have here in New Jersey through through our laws that allow us, it's really the only tool that we have that allows us to provide some type of an incentive to create for developer to come into a municipality. And now more than ever, it actually it looked like it was going to die down a little bit, but now more than ever, we see the need for a pilot. And where you see that in 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 everyday life and everything is interest rates have gone way up. So whether you're borrowing for your own home or you're borrowing as a developer for a sixty-eight unit project, you know, you know, a year or so ago, you were paying four percent, now you're paying eight, nine, ten percent for your mortgage in your bank. So that is an incredible cost that developers are now dealing with. In addition to that is the cost of the development itself, the hard cost, the construction cost and all that that goes into it. And although rents have gone up over the course of the last, you know, ten years, they haven't caught up to where the markets are right now with regards to costs of projects and interest rates under loans. So what do we do is we have this opportunity through the law to provide some type of a relief. It's the only line item in a developer's expenses that they don't have control. And so if you're a bank and you're looking at the operating expenses of a development, the one piece that you get concerned about is taxes. Those you're at the whim of the government, you're, you know, you're not sure what else is happening with the government, with the municipality, the budget that you're dealing with. So you could have big swings in taxes and so banks don't like that. Banks like to see some type of consistency in that line item. And so what pilot does is it does just that. It gives them the ability to plan over the course of the term of their loan, usually twenty, most of the time thirty, as to where that line item is going to be. So that's a tool that we have. And you're not, you're not asking the developers to not pay any taxes. You're just, it's a different formula for the payment that which we're asking a bigger development to pay. And you're gonna hear things like percentages of gross revenues. And that's where Dan is going to go through that numbers with you, but the key is when we do a pilot based on gross revenues, you really become a partner with the developer in your community because as they do well, as their revenues go up, so do does your payments. So you would like uh the the success of the project to be there and you want the developer to continue to invest in that thing to not just come in and bolt and leave you with a project that is not being any better because obviously no one will now live there. So we want to incentivize them to do well. And if they do well, we do well. Now, if they don't do as well as they were hoping to do and their revenues are down and we don't have a pilot, our taxes are going to continually go up. So there is a line there where the success of that project ends where there, you have to see a downside in their revenues, but our taxes are up. So aligning that with the revenues keeps that project in a position to actually have real success and naturally trying to. So there are a lot of things you're gonna hear from Dan, you're hoping to ask lots of questions, but I didn't get through the details. I think we have a a good uh plan to present it to that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm the other Dan. Uh, we prepared a PowerPoint presentation, which I believe will be going up on the screen momentarily. Uh, and I'm gonna go through the specifics of the project and um our analysis in determining whether a pilot is necessary for this project. Um, so we go to the second slide. So this is a a larger scale map just to locate the project. Um, it's three lots and I think officially it's now two lots because one of the lots was combined or two of the lots was combined into one. Uh, it's gonna be located at thirty-five to thirty-nine Holcott Square and five Maristown Road, which currently contains three commercial buildings and a surface parking lot. Next. Um, this is just a zoomed-in image of the site. I'm sure you're aware of it. Um, and you'll see the three commercial buildings, uh, the one on the corner of Mount Erie Road and Maristown Road, that's the Palmer Building, that is the building that will be renovated and kept um and turned into a two-story uh retail and office component. Um, and if you go to the next slide, you'll be able to see the actual concept. So this is the proposed design. This is the first floor. Um, you'll see the blue, I know the red is probably too small for you to read it, but uh the blue squares are the retail component. So there's the standalone building that I just spoke about, the Palmer Building, that will have about um, they'll have the first floor of retail and the second floor of office. And then as part of the U, that is the residential building. Uh, those are the retail components on the first floor of the residential building. Um, and then you have amenities in pink, uh, there's a fitness center, uh, there's the lobby, there's a lounge, there's a mailroom, um, and then four floors of residential. Next slide, please. So this is the anticipated unit mix, uh, sixty-eight total market rate units. You have a mix between one bedroom plus dens, two bedrooms, two bedrooms plus dens and three bedrooms. Um, you also have one hundred and thirty-nine parking spaces, of which one hundred and two will be dedicated to the residential component. Whereas you have the thirty-seven will be dedicated to the commercial retail slash office. Um, and you'll see the breakdown of the commercial space. The resi retail is the retail component within the residential structure, uh, which is about forty-three hundred square feet. And then the Palmer retail and Palmer office is that standalone building, um, of which it's about nineteen hundred square feet on the first floor and the same on the second floor. Um, just to speak a little bit about the rents, um, as you see here, these are larger units. Um, the average square footage is about twelve hundred square feet. And this is a unique product type for the borough, so in terms of comps, we look at other municipalities like um Maristown, um, Berkeley Heights and a few others where um we determined that the rents that the developer was projecting were slightly more aggressive than this. We made an adjustment down five percent just to be conservative. Um, not that we're saying that the developer won't be able to achieve those rents, but for purposes of our analysis, we want to be conservative. Um, next slide, please. So these are the estimated sources and uses, so the total project cost and, you know, the amount of debt versus equity. So the total project cost is estimated to be approximately fifty-two point eight million dollars. Uh, in that cost, you'll see um one of the line items is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund contribution, AHTFC. Uh, they agreed to pay one million dollars into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Uh, in addition, that includes the hard costs of the residential structure, that includes the hard costs of the parking, um, land acquisition, financing, et cetera. You'll notice the per-unit cost is rather high, uh, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars per unit is a very high number. Um, what you can account that for is uh, there's sixty-eight units in the project. Uh, they are much larger. Typically, you'd see a lot more units in a building this size. Um, but on a per-square foot basis, that three hundred and eighteen dollar number, that falls right in mind with other projects we've recently reviewed. Um, hard cost at a hundred and forty-three dollars a foot, parking at thirty-seven dollars a foot. Um, so this is in mind. We went through the development budget and we feel comfortable with their estimates. Next slide. So uh, we talked about, this is a summary of the negotiated pilot. Um, originally, the developer um requested a thirty-year pilot, which is the maximum length at ten percent of gross revenue, which is the minimum percentage of AGR. Uh, as we go through this presentation, we'll show you how we got to the negotiated terms. Um, but where we are today is a thirty-year pilot that begins at ten percent of AGR for the first ten years, increases to eleven percent of AGR for the next ten years, and then increases to twelve percent for the final ten years. Uh, in addition, part of this statute requires a phase-in of conventional taxes. And there's five stages of zero percent, twenty, forty, sixty, and eighty percent. And there is a minimum, there's minimum and maximum lengths for each of those stages. Typically, the developers requesting the best-case scenario for uh themselves, which would be fifteen years of zero, six years of twenty, six years of forty, two years of sixty and one year of eighty. So in addition to increasing the percentage of AGR, we included a quicker um increase in those stages. Uh, so now you have uh two years of sixty and three years of eighty at the back end. And what that means is essentially the calculation each year for the pilot is the greater of a percentage of revenue or a percentage of conventional taxes. Um, so if revenues aren't there, the percentage of conventional taxes been kicked in. Um, and typically that transition is about sixty percent. Um, so it's a, it's a huge benefit to the borough in those later years. Uh, right now, the lot generates approximately sixty-eight thousand dollars in tax revenue, of which the borough receives twenty-six percent or about seventeen thousand dollars uh based on this uh projected pilot. So in year two, which we're assuming is stabilization, of course, it's going to take some time to lease up this building. And because the pilot is based on a percentage of revenue, year one revenue may be different than year two during lease-up. So for purpose of our analysis, we're assuming the building will be ninety-five percent occupied in year two. And based on ten percent of gross revenue, the gross pilot is estimated to be approximately three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, of which the borough will receive uh just over ninety percent of that, which is three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Um, and that includes a two percent administrative fee. Over the thirty-year term, the borough is estimated to receive approximately sixteen point nine million dollars. If you compare that to what the site is currently generating undeveloped uh over the thirty-year term, assuming a two percent annual increase in conventional taxes, uh, the borough would only receive seven hundred thousand dollars. So this is an additional sixteen point two million dollars of revenue to the borough. Next slide, please. This is just a comparison of the gross pilot under the original ten percent request versus the currently negotiated pilot. So the developer will be required to pay approximately one point seven million dollars more than their original request. Next slide, please. Okay, so this slide is uh the comparison of the developer's returns under conventional taxes and the pilot. Before we even consider a pilot, we take a look at the project under a conventional tax scenario. In order to do this, we worked with the tax successor Ed Kerwin. Uh, we gave him the projections of the residential units and the commercial components as well as the parking. And he predicts that the conventional tax number will be approximately six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's the green lines on the left table. Uh, when you plug in the estimated rents and the estimated operating expenses, you get a net operating income of two point eight million dollars. Um, and what this is saying, so we take a look at several different metrics for developer returns to determine if a project is financially feasible. One of which is net project value. That's that red number that's negative one point nine million. What that's saying is at stabilization, under conventional taxes, the project would be worth one point nine million dollars less than it costs to build. Um, so that's one metric identifying uh an issue in terms of financial feasibility. Uh, we also look at internal rate of return and yield on cost. Internal rate of return takes into account the amount of equity the project uh is put into the project and looks at an average rate of return each year. If it's sold after ten years, you'll see that that uh percentage is four point E. A typical uh market return is somewhere between ten and fourteen percent. So that's well below the threshold. Yield on cost, again, that is taking uh the NOI by by the project cost. Uh, typical return is somewhere between six and seven percent. Here you're at five point three. It's something that Matt Jessup mentioned regarding lenders is the debt service coverage ratio. That's the, essentially the cash flow that's available to pay off uh the debt service on the loan. Um, in today's market, lenders are not willing to go below one point two X. So you essentially need to have a hundred and twenty percent of the amount available to pay off the debt service. So at one point oh six, it would be unlikely that this project would receive permanent financing, construction or permanent financing. So based on those numbers, uh, we feel comfortable that this project would be unlikely to move forward under conventional taxes. So then the next question is, uh, what is an appropriate pilot that both benefits the borough um and also allows the project to move forward? Uh, right here, you're sitting looking at a ten percent pilot uh in year two, because that's our assumed stabilized year. So you'll see the property tax number drops from six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to four hundred and five thousand. That's roughly sixty-five percent of conventional taxes. That in turn increases the market value of the project. So now instead of a negative one point nine million dollar net project value, you have a positive two million dollar project value. Your IRR and your yield on cost have increased, um, however, still below our minimum thresholds. And the debt service coverage ratio has increased to one point one five. Uh, so this is uh somewhat of a tight project. However, the developer has represented to us that they will successfully finance the cost of the project, so. Um. Next slide, please. I know there's a lot of numbers here and uh, if you can zoom in a little bit. So this is a projection of the pilot over the thirty years. And I would like you to focus on line year two, which is grayed out. So on the left, you'll see the percentage of gross revenue, percentage of AGR, ten percent. You'll also see the percentage of OAT, which stands for Otherwise Applicable Taxes. That's the percentage incremental taxes. Uh, you have the gross pilot, which is estimated to be approximately three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Then you have less land tax credit. So for this project, the residential component of the land will be exempt. However, the developer will continue to pay land taxes on uh the retail component of the project. So they will pay a normal land tax bill for the retail component and that uh amount will be split as incremental taxes are split. Uh, but that is given to the developer as a credit against the gross pilot. Um, so you'll see that the gross pilot is reduced by about three thousand dollars. You have a net pilot of about three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. The county gets five percent of that net pilot. Um, and then we're adding back in the borough's share of the land tax credit. And there's a two percent add-on fee each year that goes one hundred percent to the borough. So of the gross pilot of three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, the borough's share of it will be about three hundred and eighty-two thousand. Um, those numbers increase as revenues increase, as the percentage of annual gross revenue increases and as the percentage of conventional tax increases. Uh, next slide. Uh, so this is an interesting comparison. So uh, this is really for illustrative purposes only. As we mentioned, we do not believe that this project will move forward under conventional taxes. But this gives you a sense that if it was financially feasible, the difference between the borough's share of the pilot and the borough's share of conventional taxes. So if you look again at year two, uh, the pilot, the borough's share is about three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. And although conventional taxes are six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, the borough only receives twenty-six percent. So the borough would only be receiving one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So under the pilot, um, as compared to conventional taxes, which again is for illustrative purposes only, uh, borough's share is approximately two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars more. And that increases as uh percentages increase. Next slide, please. Uh, this one's pretty self-explanatory, but uh this is a comparison of the existing taxes and the borough care as compared to the pilot. Um, as mentioned earlier, uh, the project is currently paying about sixty-seven thousand dollars. So if you look at year two, we're assuming existing taxes increased by two percent annually. So the borough's share of year two would be approximately eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, compared to under the pilot, it will be twenty-three thousand dollars. So each year, the borough uh share will increase by approximately three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Next slide, please. Uh, so the last part of our analysis is the fiscal impact analysis. Um, obviously, this project will generate a number of new residents and new public schoolchildren. Uh, there is a study that was done by Rutgers University called Who Vives in New Jersey Housing? That report was originally done in two thousand and seven, I believe. And they researched hundreds of thousands of residential units across the state of New Jersey within uh all different types of buildings, rental condos, small, large, uh townhouse. Um, you know, five, they had different categories for each of those types. Um, and in November of twenty eighteen, they updated that report to include new construction buildings, which are defined as buildings built between two thousand and two thousand and sixteen. Uh, so there they had tens of thousands of units that they incorporated. And they created demographic multipliers that you can apply to each building type and each bedroom count within those buildings. Uh, so what you're seeing here are those multipliers. And I will say, uh, I've worked on my fair share of projects, so we have a lot of actual data in-house at NW. So we always compare uh the projects that we've worked on, once they're built, and we get the actual schoolchildren and resident data to compare to the projections that the Rutgers studying, um, uh, that the Rutgers study results in. And uh, for example, we have a list of about twelve buildings that were recently built over the last few years. And when we compare the actual number of public schoolchildren to uh the projections, in all but one case, the actuals were less than the projections. And in that one case, the actuals came out of one student higher than the projections. So it makes us feel very confident that the uh projections from the Rutgers study are accurate. If anything, they may be exaggerating the number. Um, so here you can see using those multipliers, it's estimated that this project will result in approximately a hundred and sixty new residents uh and approximately five new public schoolchildren. And you can see what that increases based on existing population, a two percent increase in the population and roughly a point three percent increase to the actual enrollment according. and roughly a point three percent increase to the actual enrollment according to the Board of Education User Friendly Plugging. Uh, with that said, that is it for my presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions if you'd like.
Thanks. So the last thing I just wanted to finish up on, uh, all of the details of the different steel that you just sort of gave me out are memorialized in the financial agreement, which is the agreement between the borough and the developer, which is approved by the ordinance that you introduced at your last meeting, and I believe are considering for a public hearing and final adoption at your next meeting. That financial agreement memorializes the terms of the pilot themselves, those ten eleven twelve percent of AGR, the phase in potentially of otherwise applicable taxes, the two percent administrative fee, the land tax exemption on the residential component, and the land tax credit that the developer gets for paying land taxes on the retail component, which is statutory, by the way, we have to give them that credit when they pay land taxes. That's, we're not doing that voluntarily, giving them that credit, that is required. Um, all of those terms, terms governing transfers, indemnification, all of which are included and memorialized in the financial agreement, which then runs with the land, the pilot itself runs with the lands uh, for the thirty year term.
So thank you, Matt. Uh, any council members have questions for either Dan or by the question? Um, they, uh, you all, all of your figures are based on ninety five percent occupancy of this prop- property track?
Uh, yes, except for year one, uh, we can lease up here, but yeah, years two through thirty, we're assuming nine percent.
What if we only have fifty percent occupancy, or thirty, or ten percent occupancy, then what are the numbers in the data?
So you are absolutely correct. If that does happen, the revenues will be decreased, um, and the pilot payment will be less. But it's more likely that, uh, if they are struggling to lease up, that they'll reduce the rents such that they do get filled up. So it would be very rare to see a building only twenty or thirty percent occupied. It'd be more likely to reduce the rents, but you're right in the sense that the revenue for the building would be reduced and essentially would be reducing the pilot.
Now, if the rents were reduced, that also reduced the pilot payment?
Yes.
Anybody else?
I, I have some other questions, so thank you. Uh, thank you for asking that. Um, I know, if you can just state to the public how the school formula works, Matt, I think you mentioned this before, in other words, how does, whether it's five students or six students or seven students affect how the school sets its budget? And then how does that then matriculate to our tax rate?
Uh, sure, so. So a- as a general matter, the Board of Education, whether this project produces five more kids, ten more kids, two more kids, they will set their budget in accordance with their needs district-wide. They will then pass along that amount to you, and you will collect that the uh, requisite amount of taxes necessary to fund one hundred percent of their budget. So no matter what the impact is of this project on the schools in terms of addition of all kids, I'll come back to that in a minute. Board of Education receives one hundred percent of the funds that it needs to educate those children along the way. Uh, with that exception. Uh, I think one of the things that we generally need to keep in mind when it comes to analyzing, in this case, side, I think, for five, five children coming in, is those children come in in different grades, which may mean different schools over periods of time. And generally speaking, and I don't know if we looked at the demographic information for this school district, but generally speaking, in suburban um, municipalities, school districts are declining in population on an annual basis. So it is possible, if not likely, that by the time this project is constructed, the number of students that have, that were uh, in the school the year before may still be less than the number of students in the school the year after this is built, notwithstanding the five students that are injuries. So the pilot, one ninety five percent of which gets paid to you, five percent of which gets paid to the county, the Board of Education continues to get one hundred percent of the funding that it needs to educate every, all of the students that are flying. Thank you.
Anyone else on the panel? Dan, I have another question. What percentage would be of occupancy would be the break-even point between conventional taxes and the pilot?
Break-even point?
Let's say, would it be if it was only uh, like sixty percent occupancy, they would be equal in, in amounts, I'm just, uh, sorry, I didn't understand what that would be, if, if you know.
I don't know it off the top of my head, but I can do the math real quick, uh. But yeah, so right now, the, the gross pilot projection at ten percent is sixty five percent of conventional taxes. So in terms of, if you wanted the borough share to be the same on your conventional taxes as the pilot, um, I would have to, I, I can do the math at the table, but I mean.
No, I, I'd just like to add that in that scenario, you wouldn't have a project to compare to, right? Because this project doesn't exist if it's conventionally taxed. So there is no break-even point compared to a project that doesn't exist. The other thing I think to keep in mind is, any project like this one that's conventionally taxed, um, is based on revenue, right? It's based on its production. So if this project were a project that could have been built if it were conventionally taxed, uh, and got reduced to thirty five percent occupancy, you would be seeing a tax appeal, and the taxes would actually be going down too. So I think even if we did do a comparison between pilot and conventional taxes, again, recognizing that the latter can't happen, we would have to also reduce the taxes that that project would pay if it were thirty five percent occupied, because it would not be paying the same taxes as if it were ninety five percent occupied.
Yeah, I was there.
I knew. That, that's because commercial buildings are, are, the values based on income, whereas residence is, is based on apparel for sales, right? So if they're, that's right, because if rents go down, they're going to have a tax appeal, and the assessment's going to go down as well.
And then just a comment, I just want to say, really grateful for the analysis. I think it was excellent, uh, and analysis. I particularly helpful to see, as you were just outlining, uh, that the uh, project as is versus what it, you know, what wouldn't be with a pilot, and even some of the other uh, models, uh, comparisons without the property that exists right now, so. Just thank you, and I, um, will the slides keep public? Um, or are they not public?
I think they should be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's helpful for residents to see it and.
It's all made to stand in public, so.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But, um, just for, we can refer to that, because I think, uh, it really helps residents to sort of look at the numbers themselves, break them down, and, uh,
On the website?
Yeah, perfect.
Under our, uh, the developments section, where we can have all that. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. And Matt, I thank you for, it's not public yet. Sorry, hang on, I'm going to wait. Right after I thank them. Um, where was it? Oh, no, I think it was really useful, and I appreciate Matt recommending that we do this independent uh, evaluation. I think it really helped us get a clear view of, you know, our advantages versus theirs. I think that was a really good decision on our part and the recommendation, so I really appreciate that, and you guys to be pumped up, so thank you. If you want to hang around in case there's something that the public may need a question with, alright. So now I will over to public session. Uh, if you would like to speak here, you need to stand on the X. And just give us your name and address.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Chris Duncan, and I've lived in, on Brooklyn Lane since nineteen eighty-eight. And uh, let me just begin uh, to explain my background a little bit. So, not briefly, uh, I haven't really been in this field in a while, but my first job back to college was working for Jersey City Development Agency. And although Jersey City has turned around in the last twenty or so years, I remember their urban renewal project started well over fifty years ago. And the agency was created in nineteen forty, and nothing was visible in the city well until the nineteen sixties. And that was small projects. Okay, and after that, I went to uh, Rutgers Business School for an MBA, with a degree in finance and a degree in public finance. So here's my, uh, last week, when I'm reading the Burnsville news, and I was shocked to see the plans for the former properties are referred to as urban renewal. First, we are not urban. And uh, and the second thing is, developers asking for a taxable for thirty years. Um, I, they, they, their numbers are wrong, because when I looked at the tax duplicate, which is not really up to date, uh, I, I see their taxes as seventy seven thousand dollars, so I'm not really at sixty seven thousand dollars. And uh, I don't understand why this would be considered um, urban renewal, and I don't know why the town would consider a taxable at this time. Uh, they haven't shown any, any results. Um, and so, um, I am concerned that the bet- uh, fund rate has gone up two and a quarter percent in the last year. And so that they are right, that the ta- ta- the interest rates for any kind of mortgage is eight, nine, ten percent. Very different than a year ago when this started, it, it, in, in the process. So, uh, the other thing is, uh, I would be, uh, I am opposed to anything that moves property off the tax roads. As far as I know, the Audi building and the, and the property on two oh two, that is part of some nature. Um, and, 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 and now this is the center of town, there are, I don't understand why any of those projects were taken off the tax roads, and why the town was. So in summary, I'm, I'm opposed, and I question why the town would want to take any commercial property off tax roads now or anytime soon. And that Burnsville really can't wait that many years ago for a revitalization. Because, you know, we think of Alcott Square as our town center, but really, what is our town center? Is it, is the King's Plaza? Uh, and uh, I, I just think the scope of the project is too big, and uh, and I don't think those numbers are, if, if just the one number I knew that I looked up yesterday is not right, what about all the other numbers? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Matt, can you explain the urban, because that's.
Yeah, I'd be glad, yes, I, I think I can, I hope I can. It, it is a little bit confusing. So, under the long-term tax exemption law, which is the law that governs the ability to grant a pilot, the entity receiving the pilot is required by law to be what is called an urban renewal entity. That is perhaps an unfortunate statutory term, given that pilots are being done throughout all suburban, you know, urban, rural, wealthy, not as wealthy, you name it, municipalities statewide. Uh, nonetheless, we are required to grant a tax exemption to what is statutory defined as an urban renewal entity. That is a limited dividend entity, which is important. I didn't mention it, we didn't really mention it before, but there is a limit on the amount of profit that an urban renewal entity, that a limited dividend entity can make. So while we are granting them a tax exemption in order to make the revitalization happen, without which it wouldn't happen, um, the developer can't go off and make, you know, ungodly sums in profits, because by law, they are statutory limited to a certain amount of profit. Um, so again, urban renewal entity, yes, technically, legally, under the law, but the entity is really the redeveloper, and redevelopers are redeveloping town squares, town centers, you name it, throughout all types of municipalities in Jersey.
Thank you. I know that's a strange term that they use. Um, anyone else in the public? Yes, Jack.
I just want to follow up on Councilmember Freefield's comments. Cause, cause I, when I'm hearing the numbers, and I'm not against the pilot, I've actually worked successfully in a lot of, uh, municipalities in some of those counties, but the, the numbers seem to be based on best-case scenario with the ninety five percent in two years. And we've had developments here in Burnsville that took more than two years to even get their first tenant. So I think it might be worthwhile to get a range of occupancy estimates, uh, so the council can make an informed decision. And as far as the question about the break-even point, which may have been a bad term, but e- even if the project didn't get built, as, as was mentioned, there would still be taxes on the existing buildings. So what would the minimum occupancy need to be on year two for, for the new development to at least equal the taxes that would have happened if it wasn't built at all?
There's some dance for individuals there.
I can jump in on that for a quick second. Um, there is a minimum annual service charge that is set as part of the rental agreement. Um, despite statute, it is what we paid in the last full year of taxes prior to this building being built. So it protects against you, uh, receiving less than what you were currently receiving. But that's an important protection on that. Um, just going back to the, to the percentages, if the project, just for purposes of the numbers, and we do look at the different sensitivities. So if it's only fifty percent occupied, and you just took that across the board, you know, the, the revenue is about three point nine million, so the taxes at ten percent of pilots, three hundred ninety something thousand dollars, as we mentioned. So if it's only fifty percent occupied, you'd be somewhere down closer to two hundred thousand dollars. Still higher than what you're currently making today. Um, so I think you just, you, you can build in those sensitivities. And each year, you know, the administrative fee that is really required of developers to pay to the borough is the money that you can use, and most people do, to bring on somebody to confirm their numbers at the end of this year. They're required by law and by the financial agreement that Matt's got us system writing out to provide on a third-party independent audit report. That shows all of their rental revenue, uh, lease revenue from, from their tenants. And then that is what is checked to make sure that the pilot is the right amount. So there are safeguards in there for that, so just wanted to.
Thank you. Um, anyone on Zoom, by the way? I haven't seen anyone else out there. Yeah. Oh, Kathy Peachy, okay. Hi, Kathy. The same and address, great.
Uh, Kathy Peachy, seventy Chilton, good evening, everyone. So not once but twice, um, Matt said the developer can successfully finance the cost of the project from start to finish. But the conundrum seems to be, they can finance the project, but they just can't pay the taxes. Or they have to pay it over thirty years, and I don't even know how many of us here tonight are going to be here in Burnsville in thirty years. And so we're passing that along to everyone else here. So I guess the question is, could the project ever have gone forward with conventional taxes, taxes?
Yeah, so I, I, I'll trip in on that. I, if I did say that they could finance the project and move forward successfully, that, I, I apologize, that's not what I intended to say. To answer the question at the end, uh, based on NW's analysis, the project would not move forward if it were conventionally taxed. It cannot be financed if it is conventionally taxed, and if we cannot get construction lending, and we can't convince the redeveloper to risk their equity, because the returns and the debt service coverage ratios are not high enough if the project is conventionally taxed, then we will not have a project. So it is a foundational sort of issue, threshold issue, that if this project were conventionally taxed, then it would not be constructed. Uh, if it is constructed, and it moves forward under the pilot and is constructed, it is paying a pilot, a payment in lieu of tax annually. So it's not paying, you know, eight years taxes over thirty years. Rather, it is paying a, a tax payment obligation every single year for that thirty-year uh, contractual period.
Right, I understand that. And, and did Vance not know this in advance? Like, this isn't their first developmental, uh, development, redevelopment project, so did they not have a handle on this initially?
No, they did. The redevelopment agreement that we previously executed with Advance did contemplate and foreshadow that Advance would be seeking a pilot um, in order to move forward with this project. So it was contemplated as evidenced by the redevelopment agreement that we executed with Advance, that they would be seeking a pilot in order to make the project work. And if the pilot does not get approved, which of course is of the discretion of the governing body, then either party can terminate the redevelopment agreement. Uh, which means, you know, Advance, again, if they would not be able to build the project, they would terminate the redevelopment agreement and, and not construct. And the project would lie in its current state.
Right, thank you. And, um, it, it, do the pilot, uh, thirty years, do ever, do the financing in fewer years than thirty?
Is the pilot ever less than thirty years? Did you wish shorter term on pilot?
There are, is that what the question was?
Was that what you meant, Kathy?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, there, there are, the pilot has a maximum term of thirty, but there are pilots out there that have been done for less than thirty years. Yes, I mean, it depends on the situation. Most projects like this, that where there are lenders who want that, as I mentioned, that one line item to coincide with their financing terms. So that's why you see most of the time the thirty-year number fits, because that's the term the lenders will lend on. And that's the length that they'd like to see the pilot to be. So if you're a lender, and you're lending for thirty years, but you only have certainty on that line item for twenty, you leave yourself open for risk in those last ten years if you're a lender. And so they don't want that risk, that risk costs. And so they don't want that risk. That risk costs money and that only raises what it costs for them to, to lend them. So most of the time you see thirty, but yes, you can do less than thirty.
Thank you.
And I, I would just add to Dan's point that a- as you saw through the spreadsheets, the borough collects significantly more revenue through the pilot than it would, A, if this project could be built and conventionally taxed, which of course it cannot, and certainly far more revenue than if, than what it's collecting today. So the extension of the pilot for thirty years ensures more revenue to the borough than is the pilot had made early.
Thank you. Aaron?
Hi, Aaron, fifty-one, Crepeau Drive in Burnsville. I have a lot of questions about presentation, but, uh, I'm short. So rather than getting into the weeds of the, um, all the numbers, um, just wanted to raise a couple, uh, higher level issues, I guess. Then the entire premise of this application by the developer is this project cannot get built without substantial tax relief from the borough. Uh, the ordinance characterizes it as a significant inducement to develop or to build this project. So without a thirty-year tax exemption from the borough, the developer says, I can't do it. Now, I find it hard to reconcile with a statement from our previous, um, expert redevelopment attorney, Mr. DiMarco, when we were considering the redevelopment agreement back in that. There were members of the public stood up and said they were uncomfortable with the size and scope of the development, as they still are. Um, and Mr. DiMarco said, well, you know, the public might not like it, uh, but, you know, if you don't do this redevelopment plan, they're just going to move forward with this ad hoc right application. They already have a required planning where they submitted, you know, back in March. In his words, fully conforming. And so if you don't do the redevelopment plan, they're just going to move forward with the project anyway. And you won't have any control of it, just be required by the planning board. So I made a record progress, got all the detailed preliminary files, site plan application material. And it's the same project, it's the same project this, and, uh, presented in August. Uh, they rearranged some of the floor plans and the interior designs to combine some one bedroom, the larger, uh, two and three bedrooms, plus the same project, same square footage, same mix. Then everything. So, and that site plan application is still pending. It's been pending for five months. So the whole time they were saying, oh, well, if anything goes south with this redevelopment agreement, I don't, I don't get everything I want out of the redevelopment plan or redevelopment agreement. I'm just going to move forward with the planning board. But they don't get a thirty-five-year tax exemption with the planning board. But now, all of a sudden, they got everything they wanted in the redevelopment agreement, the redevelopment plan. Now it's, you know what, actually, we're going to need an enormous, significant inducement, financial inducement, taxpayer assistance from the borough to get this project out of there. Tough to square those two things, to me. Second, I have difficulty reconciling some statements that were made at the last meeting, September twenty-fifth, that we had a meeting on the, uh, special improvement district. Um, where there was, uh, proposed a, um, you know, tax, uh, to support the activities of Main Street Bargain Hall. That was, uh, denied by a couple members of council. Who said, you know, it's not the role of government to assure the financial sustainability of an organization like this. Yet those same council members introduced an ordinance to give the taxpayer a much more substantial, excuse me, this developer a much more substantial taxpayer inducement. Um, in order to ha- have a redevelopment, you're talking about a faculty, three, community-based business advocacy group that it's not the role of government to help support their, um, purposes. But it is the role of government to give a much more extensive, ranging from millions of dollars, tax subsidy for a high-density apartment construction, not its sustainability or financial ability to build it, but profitability. They're making profit off it. And that's the role of the government to do. I find those two things, um, hard to reconcile. So we'll look forward to the hearing discussion. Thank you.
I think, you know, there, there's a misunderstanding about subsidy. We are not subsidizing anything. It's, you're switching off one form of payment for another form, one of which gives us a tremendous amount of revenue compared to the current. It's not, we're not paying anything. Subsidy to me means we're giving them money, which we are not. Am I correct?
Uh, Matt, you are correct. The, the borough is not providing a subsidy, providing money, as you said, to the, uh, to the developer. Uh, we're simply taking advantage of a tool under the redevelopment law, actually, we're all, um, longer time, the law, to ensure that this project, which is part of the council's vision, as reflected in the redevelopment plan, to make sure that it is constructed, that it's successful, and that it revitalizes and does all of the things and achieves all the goals that were set out, uh, when the redevelopment plan was drafted in the first place.
And what, what I've seen in other towns that have done used pilots is the additional revenue that the municipality gets can be used for other revitalization projects. So if it's creating a park or, you know, benches or Judith Green downtown, changing out the lampposts, that revenue can continue that process of revitalization, am I correct?
Sure. I mean, where you stand today, you're getting eighteen thousand dollars off the property. And where you stand when it's complete, you're getting three hundred and ninety thousand dollars off that property, right? So that three hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase in revenue to the borough is for the borough's general use. You can, you, the governing body will have to choose each year how to utilize that three hundred and seventy thousand dollars of new additive revenue that doesn't exist today, that will come into the budget tomorrow.
Matt, you have a question. Um, if the project were smaller in scale or perhaps not have underground parking, have above-ground parking, would it then be able to be constructed with, uh, out of pilot?
Um, that's, uh, I, I don't know what that project looks like, but generally speaking, the fewer units you have, considering the fixed costs to construct a building in the first place, the more likely that you need a pilot, right? If you have something that has a lot more units that you can monetize, create additional revenue from, then you might be more likely to be able to afford, um, be able to afford eventual taxes. In this case, as you get a project smaller and smaller, there are fixed costs that come along with the redevelopment project. Where first, it's land acquisition, for example, right? That's a fixed cost when you put ten units on it or seventy units on it, you're still paying the same price.
What will be additional, um, costs of an underground parking lot, a two-tier underground parking lot? That's what's driving this up. Would that, um, if that parking lot wasn't underground, it was above ground, would that?
If it was above ground, well, forgetting for the aesthetic for a moment, whether that expected redevelopment plan requires what it requires for a reason. But, um, if you have surface parking and you don't have the underground parking, you don't, you're going to lose those units because you're not going to have any less parking, which is going to, which is going to drive up the, the, uh, need for the pilot because you're not going to have much revenue. So it comes back to revenue produced by the project. If you take revenue away, more likely you're going to need financial assistance.
Is somebody else up there?
Yeah, it's, uh, Bonnie Sellers.
Oh, Bonnie, okay.
Hi, uh, Bonnie Sellers, one forty, Post Kennel Road. Um, I'm really excited about the project and I also look forward to hearing what the developers' plans are for Alcott Square, which I guess haven't been formulated yet. I have, uh, two, uh, questions for Matt. The first one is, um, that the agreement talks about a ground lease. Can you tell us the term of the ground lease and how that comes into play? And the second question is, uh, the financial analysis does not talk about the affordable housing shortfall dollars. And how does that affect the numbers if you spread it out on a year-by-year basis?
So let me tackle the last one first. The, um, the analysis that NW prepared and ran through earlier, and I know we're going to make those slides available. That analysis does include the developer's obligation to make that million-dollar payment into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So that is considered in the analysis as part on the expense side, which is, you know, half the equation, right? Expense side, revenue side.
Right, but I'm asking about the shortfall. I'm not asking about the million. I'm asking.
It's in, if you look at slide seven, it shows where it's made up, I believe.
The difference in where we were versus where we go, the additional one point seven three million dollars that we negotiated with the developer from where they were to where we are. Right, so there is a slide, I believe, that also reflects, um, the change in the business deal and the net economics to the, uh, to the borough are an additional one point seven three million dollars, um, from where the developer targeted. So that's how we extracted, um, additional revenue for the, uh, for the municipality's benefit.
Um, I think it was slide seven. Groundless.
Oh, groundless, thank you. Uh, so, yes, the property is subject to the ground lease. That's a great point. That's reflected in the redevelopment agreement and the, uh, financial agreement. That is a long-term ground lease that is coterminous with the term of the financial agreement. So, a- and the property owner, um, as part of execution of the financial agreement is consenting to the imposition of the pilot on its property. So, um, it doesn't really have a meaningful impact in light of the fact that the developer is the long-term less C and the property owner is consenting.
That's the slide.
Yes.
So can you just explain, so this means on an annual basis, what, you take the differential, the one point seven million, you divide it by thirty? Is that kind of how you would think about the annual effect to the borough? Or can you just explain how this comes into play? Cause I don't think you touched on it.
That's a fair way to put it, right? So what you're looking at on the screen, originally, the, based on where the developer started this, uh, the borough is going to receive fifteen point seven six million dollars over a thirty-year period. Um, now, based on the negotiated terms, the developer is going to pay to the borough seventeen point four eight, you know, four nine million dollars there in, um, pilots over the same thirty-year period. That delta is one point seven two eight million, which is the delta across the full thirty-year term.
Um, and we're getting the million.
Yes.
Moving a million upfront for this over thirty years. So, sorry, just one quick follow-up. Um, with that, could we put in something from our side, maybe Jack, this is more for you, to say that we have to require this and future councils to hold that money aside and put it into our COA fund instead of just spending it wherever it is?
It's going to go into our quarterly trust fund, and that can only be spent for, for the value groups.
But that's, that's, that's the one million. I'm talking about the difference that we're, that we're, the thing that we're making up for a pilot. Can we put money aside from, we can't commit other. We can't do that.
Uh, you can't buy a mutual council, right? On an annual basis, I think the governing body, yes, choose to set aside, let's say it's fifty thousand dollars, whatever that number is, right? In next year's budget, but not next year because you won't have the money again, but in the twenty twenty-five budget or whenever this comes online, and you have that excess revenue, you could choose to appropriate fifty thousand dollars towards your quarterly trust fund. Right? And the next governing body in the next year turn around and do the same thing. That governing body can turn and say, well, we really need this parking improvement. That's critical to the kids. Move the fifty thousand there, right? That's an annual discretionary discussion amongst the government. How to spend all of that excess. Jack, can we pass a resolution that is, requires annual renewal that states the intent of that money?
Sure, you can certainly state your opinion.
It's not by, it would state the intent. Yeah, time cash. As long as one of you stays on for the next thirty years, I will always have.
Uh, anyone else in the public?
There's Jeff Harless.
Oh, Jeff Harless, okay.
Jeff Harless, eleven Laurel Lane. Uh, on the ground lease, I, I thought I understood it, but now I'm a bit confused. Who would be the less C and who would be the less SOR on the ground lease?
The, um, lessor is the underlying property owner, which is a Palmer Enterprises, I think it's actually, is it Palmer Enterprises LLC? Something like that. Uh, that's specified in both the redevelopment agreement and the, um, and the financial agreement. And the less C is the AR, uh, Advanced Burnerville, um, Urban Renewal, LLC. That is the redeveloper responsible for constructing the project.
Thank you.
A question related to that. Um, I think what I heard in the past about, um, issues coming up down the road is that the ground lease, I guess, could you explain how that factors into the the less, the less C AR is going to present to us numbers every year of their revenue, how much they earn in the cream? So, do we know in advance, or I think it would help me in advance to know what the ground lease terms are too for the next thirty years? Like, do we get privy to that information? So we know that they can't say, oh, well, in year two, our lease payment was, I'm just going to fill out a number, a thousand dollars. But in year five, it went up to ten thousand. So that means our revenue went down by ten and our money gets lowered.
So.
Do they have the ability to change it?
And I want to thank you. That's a great question and it raises a really important issue. Um, to answer the direct question, we do not get to see the details of the ground lease. That's confidential document. There is a memorandum that is recorded with the land that gives very basic terms. But here's why we don't care. And this is an important, uh, factor that we probably didn't, uh, describe well enough. Your pilot is equal to a percentage of annual gross revenue. There is no expense computation in that annual gross revenue number. The only number we care about is what did the developer make in revenue? Rental revenue from the apartments, commercial rent, revenue from the, from the retail and commercial. If they charge tech fees, if they charge bike storage fees, if they charge for parking, any form of revenue is revenue. We get ten percent of that revenue regardless of whether their lease payment is a thousand dollars or five thousand dollars. So it, it's a great question. It's a great point. Um, the, the expense side does not matter to us beyond the analysis of do they, do they need it in the first place, right?
A- as a follow-up, is the documentation audited, financial, is it tax return? What's the, what's the paper trail of the gross amount?
Yes, so the, um, LLC is obligated to file an audit with both the government and with the State Department of Community Affairs. So, so they're not just filing with us, but they're also filing with the, the state.
Anyone else in the public who should be heard? I will close the public session. Um, thank you both for being here. At the end of the video, I can get the camera. Sorry. Um, moving on to public hearing on the ordinance, um, twenty twenty-three, nineteen seventy-nine, which is prohibited smoking in outdoor areas, downtown, whispered. Uh, this again, because the planning board did not have the opportunity to, to do this. We need a motion to continue the public hearing to October twenty-third. Yes?
Yes.
There's a motion.
I will move too. And we extend to the public hearing until October twenty-third.
No, thank you. Ball in favor? It's voice for the motion. And that law call for the ordinance. And I also, let's see, need a motion for the next one as well to continue the public hearing. This is the ordinance twenty twenty-three, nineteen eighty-one, making attached accessory dwelling units for permitted accessory use in the R one and R one ten zones.
I'll move.
Ball in favor? Okay, hopefully, uh, the lead complaint board has an agenda for Thursday.
Have a call.
Yes, in public.
Oh, it's, it's, that's right.
Or in person, right? Yes. Um, okay, before we go on to this, Jack, can you, do you have any background on this, just clearly?
Yeah, EDP recently reclassified most municipalities, this tier A, under the still with regulations. So we have a number of new ordinance we have to adopt, including this one, which regulates the storage of salt on private property. So it's taking, that's correct, it's taking its fingers into the water, um, normal.
Which is, the point being that if it's just loose and it rains, it runs into, um, our water system.
Correct. If a shop price store is sold on a parking lot, they've got to comply with these.
You can't imagine we have many salt storages for needs.
Does that lead to a homeowner who keeps a bag of salt?
We do.
Yeah, take it out of the bag and put it in plastic, in a cup or something.
Yeah, you have to build a cement well.
I'm thinking this is an old needs to go.
It's a model that you have to adopt.
So, so we don't adopt. They just, it's still a lot, so.
That's right.
I, yeah, so I mean, look, we can move it, and if we don't adopt it, then they can push it. We can move it, and if we don't adopt it, then they can push it.
Well, we cannot move it.
Yeah.
I move that ordinance. Twenty twenty-three dash nineteen eighty-four. Adopting regulations for privately owned salt storage and supplementing and landing chapter twenty-two of the borough code entitled Stormwater Regulations. Be introduced by title, press numbers reading, published according to law and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven P M. Monday, October twenty-third, time is only three.
I'll, I'll second, I'm just interested to hear the public hearing on this.
Yeah, I'm just curious though, you know, I mean, it does, you keep it in a bag, but then you dump it in the driveway, so. Either like it's getting washed, losing, or. I don't understand why.
Like the location of it too, like putting it in there.
Or, or late or. How are we gonna notify residents of this? Or, or enforce, and what's our obligation to do that? I mean, yeah, how are they gonna enforce their case? It's impossible to enforce.
Yes, I agree.
Unless we hire somebody to go door-to-door and inspect people's lives.
If this doesn't pass, what happens?
It's still the law.
Well, I, yeah, I agree.
But we can protect.
Yeah. There's been some of you that have been there.
Yeah, we can talk about it, we should, I, I understand your reluctance.
I know.
Right.
One of the, 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 the landscaping business, cause it does talk about residents who operate businesses from their homes, so like, if I know a resident. Near me who's operating a plow and has a giant pile of crap in the driveway. And we live near the stream, then that's a issue. And it's sometimes invisible from, just driving by, so.
And is that, um, venue would be reported to D P, are they the regulatory industry?
Hopefully, of course.
Hopefully, so it would be our zone. The same, the high grounds and.
So, you're, you're zoning officers walking out to the car and looking to the right and seeing a big pile of salt, and to the left and seeing a stream. As they're walking their car in that rural parking lot?
Now, privately, no.
Oh, that's right, okay.
I agree.
Must have that wrong, okay.
Let's see the press, we're starting with discretion.
Yeah, okay.
All right, well, we'll see what happens with our public hearing. Uh, moving on to.
I'm sorry, I didn't do the voice stuff.
Oh, sorry, didn't hear that. Ball in favor?
Hi.
Their post? All right, so it's introduced. Uh, moving on to resolutions, we only have ninety, twenty-three one ninety-one to one ninety-five. Um, anything you want to talk about? All good. In the morning. You know, like, maybe do some.
Uh, I'll move that resolution to twenty-three dash one ninety-one, twenty-three dash one ninety-five, be adopted.
Ball in place.
Mr. Adam, yes. Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. Merrill?
Yes.
Mr. Merritt?
Yes.
All right, um, items of business, mayor's update, um, I was invited to the ribbon cutting at the Burnsville Middle School Media Center. Gorgeous new media center, it's really beautiful, if you're ever in the school, um, what they've done is really make it child center. So, it's got all these cute little areas where kids can sit and work on projects, and really beautiful. Uh, I attended the mayor's roundtable in Plainsboro on the twenty-ninth, um, I'm on the, uh, New Jersey League of Municipalities Affordable Housing Working Group. And we are sponsoring three workshops for mayors to get their input on affordable housing suggestions for. How it could be different, um, trying to get ahead of the twenty twenty-five, so that may possibly. Writing some legislation and having, getting people to. Submit them, so. Hopefully, something will be different for twenty twenty-five round.
We better.
I know, but we can try, we can keep trying.
Try, we should try, I agree.
Yeah. Actually, one of the suggestions, which I thought was really good, was being allowed to set a certain percentage, you know. Twelve, ten, for our local residents, so the people that live here can stay here.
Yeah, cause that's, that's been a problem since day one, and not like.
Yeah. And I think that's, that's what we really wanna push on, because it's, I have people calling me, uh, asking, you know, gee, I have someone who doesn't wanna stay, I can't afford these apartments. I think it would be great if we could do that for me. Um, I did my eleventh wedding, actually, Brian, I'm gonna do my twelfth.
Wow.
Yeah. Uh, I attended the concert by the Friends of the Library, which, um, was a Carly Simon tribute, they're doing Sunday concerts, if you get a chance, they're usually very good. Uh, we had a board meeting for the New Jersey Conference of Magnums, I picked the winner of the apple basket at the farmer's market on Saturday. Um, I attended, yes, no, Sunday, uh, the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for R J Brugnowski. Um, and gave him the proclamation that we write into the record, and our last meeting, um, Senator Bramlett was there, um. Congressman Keynes represented, it was a really, really well-attended event. Um, this morning, we did a ribbon cutting for State Farm that just opened in, uh, the Schotten Center. And they were on Quimby, so they moved over there, so stopped and said hello. And this afternoon, I attended a webinar on the New Jersey State Plan Update, which was last done in two thousand and one. So, they're trying to be, have it be more inclusive and include. Housing and environment and, you know, everything, rather than just doing separate pieces. So hopefully, this process will go smoothly, and that's my report, um, administrator. Nancy.
Uh, we finally received the initial high-level assessment that I'm waiting for. Um, from Bankland Engineering, I have three hard copies, that's their mistake, if anybody wants hard copy downstairs, but otherwise. Um, I will email you the. Link to access to your shop if you want to read it. Um, the mayor and I are going to be attending a meeting with the engineer from Bankland, so to explain it, and we can find out what. Um, like what it all means and what the next steps are for that, and hopefully, we'll be doing that by the next meeting, uh. I don't have a date right now. And then, as you actually referenced earlier, uh, the planning board and zoning board will begin having their meetings in person, um, starting this week, uh, Thursday. They will be able, uh. People, they will review the meetings on our YouTube channel, uh, but they will not be able to, uh, participate virtually. So, if residents want to make a comment or ask a question on an application, um. They, or if they wanna participate, they would have to do so, um, in person. And here with that, right?
Thank you. Uh, we had a request from, um, Madeline English for the winter and summer farmers market dates. Which are the same as last year. Um, anybody have a problem with those? Nope, all right, so you can tell Madeline that that is good. Um, Anthony had given us the parking decal revision from last year that we need to. Do again, uh, did anyone have any changes or suggestions on that?
I suggest you look for an app.
What?
I, yeah, I.
That is your other report.
I should, yeah. Got it, so I, I also had a call, uh, a demonstration, actually, by. Uh, Chad, you had mentioned the.
Uh, park mobile.
Park mobile, right.
Yes.
He gave me a proposal. With like, um, whatever cost, uh. It's. There is a free, like, service fee for every community park, but. I don't know, and I apologize, I cannot bring you, it was a while, it was right after the last, so I forgot. Uh, but I was waiting, actually, to present it to you, until, um, the current people that we use were supposed to give us an updated proposal. Because our, our contract events is coming up, so I wanna compare the value. So I will follow up that and bring it to you by next.
Do they, um, provide the signage? So in regards to, do they take, take care of some of the install, if we're gonna go with park mobile?
The install of the kiosk or the?
So there's a kiosk, and I believe there's signage for, that had, at least one, I've seen it before, Q R codes to get the app and instructions.
Well, you have the number they gave us too, don't you?
Yeah.
You can, so you, uh, no, you don't have to know the space, if they give a license or a license.
Oh.
Just put, yeah, that's, yeah.
So often, they gotta compare it to the bubble.
But I thought for January, it was still me, it's fifth, right? And I think there was a request not to do bumper stickers, the people don't like sticking the stickers on the bumper, they don't have any.
We, we, we can do that, uh, I, I can contact our decal vendor, and, and I get that instead of bumper stickers, but yes.
Yeah, and then that way, if they change cars, you know, if you're having, your car's in the shop, you have a loan, or you can transfer the.
Actually, the, the plates are written on the decal, so. In order to do that, that's how we do it now, the license plate should written on the sticker. So we write, we write the license plate on the, and the decal, so, so you go, you ask them to transfer. People think, oh, another, another five dollars, do you get a, a, a second decal?
Oh, if they had to.
Yeah.
Nancy, do you, does it allow, if there are seasonal? Spots, does it allow to designate seasonal spots with the park mobile?
In other words, it'd be a year?
A year, or city definition.
A day?
Yeah. You know?
To be able to sign up for every year.
So let's say, yeah, can we designate some, the train station's spots that way?
I don't think.
Uh, your check.
I think we.
Oh, yeah.
That's, it does on the turn kiosk.
So we have now, right?
You could always change that.
Yeah, I mean, you may not need that, I think. Unless fewer and fewer people are buying seasonal packages, cause they're not going to the, every day.
So you said you'll present that next week, I'd be very interested in the public opinion.
Of the next, next week, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we don't need to act on that, right?
No, I didn't, I'm gonna say, it's a good question.
Um, Zoom meetings, uh. You know, you were here, yes, for that, and our planning board meeting, um. We were just talking about different ways of dealing with. Security around our public meetings, we're using Zoom meeting, um, I don't know, anybody? Have any, I still would like to suggest that we do a security audit of our system. Of our whole system.
Yeah.
Can we do that?
I actually, yeah, I actually, uh, reached out to somebody, so. Uh, whatever, moving forward, that, Anthony and I have looked at. How we handle the meetings, I can't speak to the language, um, more into our meetings, and we increased the security on ours, and then. We thought that you could have a discussion, I mean, we turned the cameras off for today. Uh, but I know in early, maybe before I came here, you had said that you wanted to see people's faces, so. You need to weigh. The benefit of seeing people's faces versus the possibility that if you turn on the camera, you don't know what's on the other side. So, I thought that you could have that discussion, make a decision, and then, you know, if you want the cameras back out, we'll turn it back out for the next meeting, but it's not, it's.
Can I ask what? Uh, I understand what happened, but how it happened, did you, I don't know if it's okay to comment on how it happened? Was it because someone shared their screen?
Yeah, well, yeah.
So it wasn't a matter of someone taking their camera and doing something wrong, it was because they, the, the, someone on the Zoom meeting shared their screen?
Yeah, it took over the shared screen.
And shared theirs, so you turned that off, which.
Well, well, you needed it in those meetings in order to have the testimony.
Well, but you can, you can provide their Zoom settings where only permission to sit there and.
But the problem is, I don't think all our staff are trained in those security days, and different people are running the meetings, so that might be.
Yeah, we don't need shared, the shared screens, like the planning board, it's on, you know, they seem to be the.
Why, why is the planning board?
There's been, there's been times when we've had a guest speaker, occasionally, yes, that.
Yes.
But you can make them the, you can make them the, you can make them the moderator.
But you need, you need to know that, you need to know how to use the system, so depending on anybody then who's initiating meetings, be trained.
Yes, but I mean, this, that started, you know, in twenty twenty, I guess, and that never happened.
Yeah.
So, you know, that particular person wasn't trained in that, I know that the both boards have decided at least temporary, I, um. I don't know if it will continue. You know, forever, but then, uh, they. They don't really like storing other people in on, on virtual meetings anyway, like they have this where they're gonna make testimony, and, um. You have to be able to see them, it makes it more difficult, uh, so, um, they, at least their attorney said that he was revising the planning board at least, that they, he. Probably some meetings are better off completely in person. With all the people, with people only having the ability to watch them, rather than participate virtually.
Can we watch some, can people watch them live, though?
Yeah, okay, yes, and I also have, um, our I T person. To go back and take all of the Zoom meetings for both boards and put links to them on our website, cause then I was.
Oh, they're not there.
I didn't find them there.
They're not, I mean, I, I guess.
If you wanted, you have to log in.
Yes.
Right, but they, so they're. Public meetings, so they should, you know, they're broadcast live, right, so they should be recording, should be.
I think, were they broadcast live, or were they only just recorded?
They're broadcast for the people who are. They were Zoom, if you watched it on Zoom. Yeah. So then.
Funny what I've watched, well, twelve years ago.
I would say, are you?
I've watched it live, and I've watched recorded version, both, both.
Okay.
I've changed it on.
Yeah. It's like silly. It's her. Yeah, I guess.
She never turns it on, so it's about fun, I like to meet people I never saw before at places, but for these meetings. I, I like seeing people's faces when.
Yeah, me too.
I like to know who we're talking to, I, you know, I think that's helpful.
We just have to be able to, I mean, I think that, in my mind, the prevention is making sure people can't share their, share. They can share their camera, they can't share their screen.
Well, we did, we already, we already did that, but you have to just keep in mind that somebody.
Just like someone can shake something, right?
Yeah, they're saying, oh, we're gonna rush the resident out, they're doing it, you know, we're gonna know who they are, we're gonna.
It's a little tiny square, it's not the full screen, we're subject, I'm serious.
My, my, my res, my reservation in this is we get more public participation. Over Zoom in all of these meetings than we do in person. Now, the question is, if we refer back in person multiple sites at a time? I don't think they will. I don't think we're, I think we're all, we're all for doing Zoom, it's a matter of, do we allow people to put their, can they tell that their camera's on?
Yeah, I think as long as we have all the security in place, and that's my concern, is that we know that it's in place.
It's in place, it's much of, it can be.
Yeah, yeah, there's always gonna be a.
Anthony always good somebody. He can, he's got. Easy trajectory, sometimes you guys something.
Inappropriate.
Little pestering, I think.
We'll see how bad it is that he can do, is that, right, oh, there's no, next meeting, we'll turn the cameras on again, hope for the best. But.
Did we already approve that, that future?
Not yet, nothing said.
We're here, knows that is in a, we have the disclaimer, in a meeting like this, if there was another hack into the system, that we can just turn it off.
That, that's why we're putting disclaimer.
And we can continue the meeting as, yeah, which the planning board could not, because they are.
That's right.
That's their whole meeting, that's.
That's the whole meeting. Same.
Yeah. Okay, um, we did have some requests that came in after the agenda was set, so we have, um. We are here, Nina Roselle from the King of Kings, and, um. I think we were waiting for Bob Markowitz to let us know. If that was okay with the Tuesday, did we hear back from him?
Not yet, he was, um, go back to the recreation, cause he said they were okay with that, so, like. He tweeted that, uh, we're gonna have to, yeah.
Okay, but as far as work is, we're okay with the pending recreation sign-off, if you're good with that?
No, we have to provide refresh, uh, data, technically, with insurance, we'll get there, and we'll just talk to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're, we're all good with that, yeah.
My, my rip also next year, now we've been using that old drive-through bank, uh, location in the two oh two.
It's gonna mess.
I know, that's been on Saturday once or more, but there's still a big demand. So we hired a police officer from, uh, town to be there. Just to make sure that there's a little traffic, and, uh, talked to the merchants nearby, and, you know, cleaners right across the street that wanted to make it. We were sensitive to that. The vacuum lady.
Right.
I mean, you're from the cafe days. No, that's been well-received so far.
Right.
Um, is there anything updated on one that passed my book through, over the room?
I have to check with Doug, but he said those projects take two to five years.
Yeah, I see.
When it's a federal project, yeah. They're still in, you know, paperwork and approval processes, you know, so it's, it's nuts, what you have to. The hoop should have to jump through. But.
We might go to more than one Saturday a month. So just letting you know, um, what we will only do Tuesdays, that field out, um, in the holdout.
Okay.
So whatever, we would like to start a change where possible, and then, whatever you need it back, we'll just be in touch, whatever, it's spring, like baseball team, or whatever they need.
Of course, yeah. Okay.
That side. Maybe. That's not.
It's too small. Yeah.
I'm changing.
The dog's box, river, river.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so just checking off, thank you. Um, the other one we had was.
The parking.
You were not talking about it.
It had to do with a surprise party, so if you can't go with it, we'll have. But I want to allow the surprise.
So whatever we're talking about, I'm fine. Blank check. Ready for marriage?
But. Yeah. I mean, first, you know, that's boiling, you first, we need the whole harness and we need that. We don't need heavy.
Yeah, our our list matters, that that assigns the facilities to our property and then, uh, the home, pre- pre- homeowners and.
That's not it.
Thanks.
Do you think this person paid attention to the Borough Council meeting? Alright, we good?
Okay, um, we have any unfinished business? Any new questions?
I I missed the last meeting, I wanted to ask about, um, I I know that this thing was discussed and that it wasn't approved. But I wanted to ask about emptying commercial properties. And if maybe we could come up with some kind of ordinance or grants locally that would address how local commercial properties that are empty in that district, like in the downtown. Um, maybe like six months max before we start implementing like some kind of a fee or something to motivate the owners of those properties, not only to maintain the visual appearance and curb appeal, but also getting tenants.
Did I hear earlier that not only can we maybe not go there, but but they could have asked for the tax appeal? I really tried to do this years ago. Um.
Well, it did, yeah, you.
And and I asked about this when I first had a mom in two thousand and nineteen and Jack, what do we told them to do it?
Well, it was framed as like a bacon fruit tax, so I think that might be not the way they want to call it. Um, instead of.
We get a fee, we were proposing a fee, right? Some kind of.
Yeah, we do it for residential, then you can, we can try to expand it to commercial properties, but it's gonna be minimal, I mean, it's not gonna not enforce them against tenants, we really can't do that.
Yeah.
Um, curb appeals of, you know.
That's right.
It's gonna be minimal.
I mean, residents have sent me, you know, like the requirements which you have to pay for windows, and I don't know if you've ever seen like property with a, you know. It just looks current, but.
I would be supportive.
I don't know if we can actually, we're gonna have to do it.
We we can, we can probably do it.
I can follow to my.
I think other towns can do this.
We we can, we can.
We can't.
We can have maintenance standards, we can have internet standards.
Yeah.
We have those, I mean, we can pack those up.
We can tighten those up and make.
More enforceable maybe, or look just see like maybe do a comparison of what other town has similar types of ordinances and just review them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can get some warnings.
Like the key, and I'm just thinking, you know, from my own experience, Madison maybe has one, uh. I honestly did try to find some and it's not that easy.
Jack is showing its reference.
I'd like to see with other towns.
Yeah, I'll I'll get some other.
Yeah, because I can't imagine that knowing that anymore.
You can't be the only one.
Well, we have limited ability to do it, right?
Yes.
Well, again, so it's. Yeah, is that part of that, like the curb appeal?
Mm-hmm.
So I, are we able, since the borough required property owners to maintain their curb appeal, clean up the grass and weeds? Can we have the form work to do it, or then put a lien on their property?
Yeah, we do have.
Not for.
I meant for commercial, I meant for the commercials.
Then we could expand it.
Because like, that would get people motivated.
Yep.
Yeah, because if Wendy's.
Right, but they probably sub that, it's cheaper and less hassle to them to just like the borough.
Yeah. But then maybe if you have a fee and the borough do it, and then the fee goes towards. And that's just like I said.
Yeah.
I don't know, it goes through the borough's forty, that's paying, that's already doing it.
Right, it covers their work.
Their salary.
Alright, let me get some warnings about, sorry, I'm running out of time, I think we can drop that.
Is there already required to do that? That's something already required to do right away.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Just a way to avoid them.
Thank you.
Uh, any other new business?
Would you post?
Alright, would somebody like to move, uh, to adjourn to an executive session?
I don't know.
Did I second? Um, you're coming, you're not coming back out.
No.
Okay, that we will not be back, so thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, Waters.